Just, I just added a warning for um... Stuff. Okay, that's it. This is the abstract. This is the relative indicator. But is it good enough? No. This may be it. So the reliability of the 1RM testing? Got that there. Isn't exactly what I wanted. Almost there though. This may be it. There's subjects. But in results... PARQ is also very similar to the RPE scale. Sorry, PARQ isn't. PARQ is like a preliminary scale that you take as you go into the gym. I'm like, I'm in the midst between being sleepy and um... 1962? Ohhh, no! This is it. And this has to be the original. Wait, what? So that's the reference to it? This is the second time that it was referenced? So what's up with the 1998 version and then when was the CR10 invented? This is it. So, I'm gonna save that because that is an awesome awesome paper to refer to later on. Put that there, go back at the top here. Clean this up, make sure that says 1962. Then we go over here. Clean this up. So then, it it was 15 graded in 1970 to 1985. Sorry. And then 1998 appears to be when the CR10 came out. But over here, oh no, this is the Borg Disp- Dispnea? This like Apnea? Dispnea? Dyspnia. Dyspnia. Yeah, so... So let me go back here now, get that stuff back in. Make sure that I have the right reference there, 1982 and then the 1962 page should be... I'm kinda back and forth here, so like I just um... I just had it. And then go back. So now we have the 1962, which is the original inception, the 1982, which I think is the 15 version factor, and then the 1998 where it gets reduced yet again down to the 10 version. At least that's what I see here. So um, it's gonna remain as that for now until uh... Until I read some more and... Yeah, so the 1970 and the 1985. So I'm gonna have to find that 1970 paper and um, put that in there. And then the 1998 seems to be the uh, the 1998 seems to be the uh, CR10 scale, which is the most implemented um, until recent times where they did that session RPE scale. Get scale. And then put in 1998. Oh, 1985. And then referenced in 1998. So I got, I got an extra couple of words out of it, which is good. You know what may be a good idea? To put on in the background? Um, some music. I'm gonna drag it over here to the other screen. Well, just a quick rap. I got that Monday jazz morning. That Monday morning jazz, although it's uh, afternoon on a Monday. Alright, maybe uh, some of that work jazz. I'm just putting in the volume a little bit. So I normally um, like lie down and like sprawl out when I do my homework. But uh, today I'm trying to work on some posture. Well, not really. Today I'm ju- I just wanted to stream my homework for a little bit, so... I'm now on a chair. Sorry, I'm just messing around there. Crad! Cradabababab. Cradabababab. Da da. Cradabab. I think this may be a meta-analysis. Yes! How am I gonna write this? Uh, I could make a table, but I kinda wanna just write it in. And if I made a table, it would just be basically there. So what you're looking at here is um... The RPE using different sports, the age range, so the standard deep, um, number of participants, how many sessions, the criteria, 1RM, and then the sig- significance interval with the ICC confidence interval and the variability. Um, the confidence interval is a pretty nice value to relate. Am I gonna go into it right now? Probably not. Cause I usually forget what I'm talking about as quickly as I... I'm gonna have to clean my keyboard a little bit. Think I may have uh, spilled some coffee on it. I have to research this almost every time. Going back to what we were just looking at. It's pretty hot in this room, I wanna turn on the fan, but um... Not happening just yet. Anyway, um... So here's your P-value, the significance between two factors and how they relate. The P-value is the number of the significance between that. It can either go up or below uh, .01 or .05. It typically stands around that range depending on um, the correlated factors, um... There's the R-value as well, which goes higher and lower depending on that as well. And this is the correlated index. This is the significance of this factor. And then the confidence interval is the confidence interval of that. So how many times it repeats over time. Oh no, it's a really strange and weird way of explaining it, but I could, yeah. So right now I'm trying to determine how exactly am I gonna take this and then put this into my own words over here? Whilst not directly copying and pasting this. And this is the, the value of gauging the fatigue for each... Sorry, wrong paper. I should've got my coffee. Yeah, so this is basically everything that I would need to explain the reliability and the validity of... Well, just the reliability, not the validity just yet. You could say the validity based on the confidence interval when compared to the significance and correlation values. Um, however, yeah, it's just without being too derivative and literally copying and pasting everything, it's kinda strange. So maybe what I will do is put a range. So I can say there's a significance value based on who wrote this. Let me go back again, make sure that I correctly understood this. Half of this right now, I'm a little bit slow today because my eyes are like... I was sitting in traffic earlier and something about sitting in traffic in the heat makes you really sleepy. And I don't have much practice doing this. Not as much as I'd like to. Training mode, yeah. What I should be reading here? To avoid my eyes from getting googly? Is this statistical analysis? Which would literally just say, okay, this is what this is what that is, that's what that is, but like I'm literally just like scrolling up and down this right now, wondering why am I not typing? I don't know what it is, but um, the combination of coffee, um, some nice jazz or nice music and I don't know, something sciencey and the clicking of like a keyboard and I don't know, just like you have these moments where you just feel so good. Um, I feel like it's like, it's either the like the warmth in your tummy or something else, I don't know. Ah, man, I messed up. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna write a couple more sentences, get them out, and then um... I'm gonna probably go for, yeah, let me, let me, let me just um... Uh, you know what? I'm trying to plug that... So this is what happens when you get like really tired. You start plugging in references in places that like don't make any sense. I almost referenced to the session RPE method specifically to this paper. When this paper like predominantly, I wanted to refer to the reliability and validity of the RPE as a whole. Um, the session RPE method though, I'm pretty sure that was invented somewhere else. So that would actually give me an extra maybe 100, 200 words? Maybe, yeah. And I could put that in somewhere else. So let me just go down to statistical analysis and then make sure that at least the correlation with objective markers. Um, so... Let me put that in there. So this is probably my favorite thing about writing these types of papers is that I can literally just um, put that in brackets or quote ta- uh, sorry. But I can just put that in there and I don't have to type it out in full again. Um, and about, I'm gonna give myself another 20, 30 minutes and then I'm gonna take a small break and I'll be back. But I'll probably be like lying around on my bed or something and trying to finish this tonight. Or maybe I'll just zone out and just go do something else. Because it's nice to, it's nice that, hey, today I wrote 200 words on my assignment. I need like, I don't know, 2000 words? But you know, when an assignment is massive like this, just plug away at it, you know? Wake up, write 200 words, go back to sleep, or just write 200 words, take a break, you know, like... It just takes time, um... Oh, whoa, yo, somebody's in here! Hey dude. "The confidence interval is where the true point estimate might fall upon replication." Kukal, "Hey, can I ask you for some advice?" Um, yes. You... You... You can, I'm by farts. Um, TDF Shoutcast. Oh buddy, yeah, it does actually. Um, nah, whatever, too late. Um... What's Docs? Yeah, that makes sense. "The true point estimate might fall upon replication." So it's a prediction of the value which may happen in the future. So you have a 90% confidence that you could predict the next value based and this is the, this is the rating of, yeah. I mean, sorry, this is, yeah. Thank you, um, TDF Shoutcast. Let's see if I can uh... Ah, whatever. What have I done here? There you go. You know what? I'm literally just staring at the computer right now. I'm scrolling back and forth past the exact thing that I need to just prove the reliability and validity. I'm literally staring at it right in the face right now and it's just like, whoa. So... I'm gonna either grab another, you know what, it's like 6 o'clock too, so I'm not gonna really grab another coffee cause it's gonna mess me up going to bed later on. Um, I'm gonna go have a snack and then I'm gonna go out for a bike ride, get the googly eyes out, and then um, maybe finish this up. Uh, let's see how many words I got now. 13:07. I need just under 3000 for this, so it shouldn't be that bad. Um, all I'm gonna really have to do for the session RPE is interpret this in my own words over here. Um, base method, da 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 da. I'm thinking maybe I just put a range. Maybe I could just calculate that right now. So I'll put like... Ah, aw man. I can either put in all these numbers and then determine the standard deviation of the R-value and the P-value, but don't really want to cause it's gonna take too much more, it's gonna take way too much time. I can put in a range though. I can put like P-value .05 to uh, P-value of like .01 over the course of several studies. And as I'm talking about it, I can literally just put it in right now. Or I can take a break and do it a little bit better than that. And lie down and get comfortable and maybe have like, uh, I don't know, a quick snack. Quick snack, do it right, well, slightly better than I'm doing it now, or push ahead. Or keep talking and get neither done. Quick break. I'm gonna go for a bike ride. Um, see you guys in a little bit. Thanks, thank you again, TDF Shoutcast. Um, bruh. How did I not? Whoa, okay. Uh, and then I might take some time and I'll just go over this yet again. So here we go. Thank you, uh, Yinbyfarts. Um, what up? Thanks for tuning in and Shoutcast, bro, you're the best. And I'm also gonna research what Docs is. Bye guys!